Welcome and thank you for joining us for this Local Decision 2017 Candidate Debate. I'm your moderator Ben Hale and I'm glad to be joined in studio this evening by the candidates running for Spring Lake Park School Board. There are seven candidates in this race and six have decided to participate in our debate tonight. I want to thank you all for being here and taking time out of your schedules to share your views with us and with the viewers this evening. So, thank you for that to begin with. I also want to tell you a little bit about our debate format tonight. We'll start with opening statements from each of the candidates. Then we'll move through several questions that we have prepared for the candidates tonight. After that, the candidates will have one last chance to speak to you through closing statements. We're going to start now with our opening statements and in the first chair is Kelly Delfts. And Kelly, that means you're up first with your opening statement.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Kelly Delfts. I've been a resident of District 16 for 37 years and I've served on the school board for 25. My reason for seeking reelection is I truly care about the educational experience of our students in District 16 and my work with our district school board has also taken me outside of our district where I was chosen as an ambassador to education, ambassador of education by the Minnesota School Boards Association. In our schools, I have done a wide variety of volunteer work, everything from helping kindergarteners read to chaperoning the senior prom. And I look forward to serving on the board for an additional four years.
Thank you for your opening statement. Next up, Michael Cruin with your opening statement.
Hi, I'm Michael Cruin. My wife Lauren and I have three children in the Spring Lake Park Schools. My son Anders is in second grade at Woodcrest Elementary. My daughter Josie's in first grade at Woodcrest and my youngest daughter Andrea is in the Spring Lake Park preschool program. I'm a real estate lawyer. I'm also a hockey and baseball coach. I've also coached flag football and soccer as well. I'm active in kids ministries at Eagle Brook Church and I'm a volunteer lawyer for the Children's Law Center of Minnesota. I also serve on the Coon Creek Watershed Board of Managers. As a litigator, I have extensive experience in learning, evaluating, analyzing, and solving complex issues. On the Watershed Board, our responsibilities include oversight of a professional staff, setting a tax levy, and approving a budget of nearly $6 million. So, I bring those skill sets to the Board. My priorities include focusing on continuing improvement of academics, being transparent and responsive to the community, supporting teachers, and fiscal responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you for your opening statement. Move next to Steve Alland with your opening statement.
My name is Steve Alland. I'm 53. I've lived in Spring Lake Park for four and a half years. I have a wife and two kids. Both of them attend Woodcrest Spanish immersion in the third and the fourth grade. I am a supervisor at a Blaine manufacturing place. I've been working there for 33 years. I'm passionate about the district and the educational system that's in place and I want to make a difference to the school board and thank you.
Thank you for your opening statement. Next up Marilyn Forsberg with your opening statement tonight.
Good evening. My name is Marilyn Forsberg. I am by far the longest-serving school board member in the Spring Lake Park District. As a matter of fact, I am the third-longest-serving in the state of Minnesota. I have four sons and two grandchildren who are in the district and during that time, one of my sons required special education services and that is a quick learning on how school districts function and what makes them tick. I have had the honor of receiving every honor given by the Minnesota School Boards Association, one for having completed 1,000 hours of in-service training. I still continue to go to their training sessions and I believe that educating our future generations is one of the most important and noble endeavors one can undertake. My decisions are made by asking what's good for kids. Children are the future. We can do something about today.
Thank you Marilyn for your opening statement. Next up is Daphne Pons with your opening statement.
Hello, my name is Daphne Pons and I want to be your next school board member. I'm a working parent and active community member who wants to make a positive difference in the lives of our kids in the district. I've lived in the district for the past four and a half years with my husband Brian. We have one daughter Willa who is a future student of Spring Lake Park Schools. I'm a nurse attorney. I've worked in the public and nonprofit sectors for the past 20 years helping others. I have also worked at the Minnesota Board of Nursing for the past five years, so I have practical experience working for and with a public board. I am currently a commissioner with the Charter and Planning Commissions in Blaine. I am active in my church at Christ Lutheran. I'm a member of the Spring Lake Park Lions and a member of the League of Women Voters as well. I think a school board member should have a proven track record of service, leadership, and collaboration. I believe that I have that record and I ask that you vote Daphne Pons on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you for your opening statement. And finally, with your opening statement, Amy Wheaton.
I am Amy Wheaton. My husband and I have lived in the Spring Lake Park School District since 2004. Our oldest son Zachary is a freshman at Spring Lake Park High School and our youngest Jace is a sixth grader at the middle school. I serve as Director of Administration and Marketing for Transwestern, which is a commercial real estate company in Minneapolis. As a member of the Executive Committee at Transwestern, I'm responsible for our annual budget, strategic plan, and oversight of day-to-day operations. I've been heavily involved with the district for the past 10 years. My involvement started with the ECFE Advisory Council and evolved into co-chairing events at the elementary level and volunteering in a number of roles from reading the classes, event volunteer, and PTO member. My time spent volunteering also sparked my interest in district initiatives. Over the years, I've been involved with the Budget Modification Committee, Community Advisory Council, Communications Committee, Special Ed Advisory Council, and most recently the Facilities Planning Team and Facilities Design Team, providing development and insight on ideas for the new elementary school and new learning spaces.
Thank you and thank you all for your opening statements. We're going to move in now to our question and answer segment. Michael, you'll be first on the first question this evening. I just want to first just get a perspective from you all on what do you think is the primary role of a school board member? Michael, you're first with that question.
Well, the primary role of a school board member is to set the vision and the policies of the school district and oversee, hire and oversee a superintendent to carry out that vision on a day-to-day basis within the school. I would be an active and engaged board member, being able to identify what is and what isn't a board decision. And when it is a board decision, I would be a voice in the room to make sure that we're doing things the right way, that we're being as transparent as possible, that we're being, and if it is a board decision, making sure that we vote and that we're accountable to the public.
Thank you for your answer. Steve, you're next with this question. What do you believe is the primary role of a school board member?
So, primary role of the school board is to separate themselves from the administration, which handles the day-to-day. The school board is more of the captain of the ship, guiding them through policies and through the future, long-range and also the short-range future.
Thank you for your answer. Marilyn, same question to you now. What do you believe is the primary role of a school board member?
By law, the primary duty of a school board is to select a superintendent. We also deal in policy and I like to call our role as being the conscience of the administration. That does not put us in an adversarial role. The administration and the board should work together cooperatively for the best decisions for kids.
Thank you for your answer. Daphne, same question to you now. What do you believe is the primary role of a school board member?
A school board member, the board is really there for governance and to set the policies, to set the vision, to take in the input of the community, and then the administration's there to really make those policies happen. And I would, as a school board member, want to work collaboratively with the other school board members, work with the administration and staff to really set forward our vision and to make sure that we are moving in the direction that's really the best for the community.
Thank you for your answer. Amy, same question to you. What do you believe is the primary role of a school board member?
Well, I agree with all of the people here on the stage tonight. I do understand that we are setting policy and we are driving the future needs of the school board, but I think it is very important for us to work in collaboration with our other school board members, administration, teachers, staff, and most importantly, parents, to make sure that the needs of the kids are being met.
Thank you for your answer. Kelly, I'll come over to you to finish up this question. What do you believe is the primary role of a school board member?
The primary role of a school board member is the governance. We govern from a high level. We are not micromanagers. We are not there on a day-to-day basis. Therefore, we have to do what is best for all of our students in our district and that includes making the hard decisions. We do listen to our public. We are very transparent. Our meetings are all televised. They are videotaped and our minutes are processed and posted.
Thank you for your answer. After every question, I'm going to offer you rebuttal time or extra time. If anyone needs it, they can, I will always offer it to you. You don't have to use it. Michael, you'd have the first opportunity on this question.
Yeah, I would just add that transparency isn't necessarily the legal definition of transparency. It also includes making sure that the administration is involving the parents prior to major decisions being made and giving them an opportunity for meaningful input.
Thank you. Steve?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Marilyn, do you have anything else to add on this question?
I think our district has been quite transparent and I think that's shown in the naming of the new elementary school. We have had several surveys and still have not come up with a name, but we have taken all kinds of input from the community.
Thank you. Daphne?
I would just say in governing the district, we just want to make sure that as a board, we're really representing the entire district and not one section over another and that we're really unifying the district through our policies that we're putting forth.
Thank you. Amy?
I'm fine.
And Kelly?
I'm fine, thank you.
All right. Well, let's move on to our next question now. Steve, you'll be first on this question. Let's talk about the school district budget a little bit. Do you believe that the current school district budget is the right size to meet the needs of students and teachers? Steve, you're up first on this question.
I believe the prior school board has been fiscally responsible. There's been good leadership. They've been cost-minded to the taxpayers and I would also be the same, cost-minded with the taxpayers. Retain teachers with competitive wages.
Thank you for your answer. Marilyn, you're up next on this question. Do you believe that the current school district budget is the right size to meet the needs of students and teachers?
We are very fortunate to be a growing district because as students come in, we also, they bring dollars with them. So, we have been able to do some things that we would be unable to do if we were a district decreasing in size. We are fiscally conservative and hopefully will remain that way. That is our plan and we are one of the few districts who is doing very well with our fiscal position.
Thank you for your answer. Daphne, I'll come to you now with this question. Do you believe that the current school district budget is the right size to meet the needs of teachers and students?
I think it is the right size. As has been said here, I think the district has been responsible with the budget. I think that we do need to make sure as board members that we are being fiscally responsible to the taxpayers, but I believe we can do that in a way that we can still provide exceptional services to our students in schools. I think historically, we have kept our taxes lower than other districts and have done well with that. I think other districts, it's been shown that just simply throwing money at problems doesn't necessarily make better test scores, make better programs for students. So, I think we found ways to be very resourceful in this district and I think we'll continue to do that.
Thank you for your answer. Amy, same question to you now. Do you believe that the current school district budget is the right size to meet the needs of teachers and students?
I do. And in my experience with the district throughout the past years, it's apparent that the district is very, they're very responsible with the dollars that they are given. Of course, I would like to see the state fund more of those initiatives. We don't have to rely on the taxpayers as much as we do with different bonds and levies, but I would urge any parent or citizen out there to meet with the district and see how they're spending their money. In all of my dealings with them, it's amazing how they can balance this and how they're very thoughtful about it.
Thank you for your answer. Kelly, your opportunity to answer this question. Do you believe that the current school district budget is the right size to meet the needs of students and teachers?
Yes, I do believe it is the right size. It has to be the right size. The only way we can get an increase in dollars is if we seek an excessive levy from our taxpayers. So, we have to work with what we are given from our taxpayers and from the state of Minnesota. An example of our fiscal responsibility was choosing the site for our new elementary school up at the National Sports Center. The other site that we were looking at would have cost an additional $3 million in dirt just to make that site buildable. And I believe that we spent that money wisely and are spending it in our district, in our schools, for our students.
Thank you for your answer. Michael, you'll finish up on this question. Do you believe that the current school district budget is the right size to meet the needs of students and teachers?
My sense is that it is the right size, but I would like to see more transparency with our budget. I'd like to see more than a one-page budget summary on the district's website so that a citizen, any citizen can go online and get meaningful information about where our schools are spending the money. Transparency is always the best policy. It builds common ownership with our district. It also lessens skepticism and cynicism from the community. But generally speaking, I do want well-funded schools. I want the schools to have the resources they need, but I also want to make sure that we're spending our money efficiently and wisely and in a way that is improving academics to the closest extent possible.
Thank you. Opportunity now for rebuttal time for everyone. Steve, you have the first opportunity.
No, thank you.
Okay. Marilyn, do you have anything else to add here?
I think it should be noted that the district has refinanced our outstanding bonds at the low-interest rates and we have saved taxpayers a lot of dollars. We also have been recognized by the Minnesota Association of School Business Officers in our clarity of financial reporting.
Thank you. Daphne?
Well, I would just add that I think as a school board member, it's important that we're aware that's what's happening in the state legislature because the majority of our funding does come from the state and we want to make sure that we are on top of what is trying to be passed in the legislature and what could adversely affect our funding for our schools.
Thank you. Amy?
To tie onto what Daphne just said, I've been chairperson of our Legislative Action Committee for the past four years and we meet with district leadership regularly to make sure that we can corral the troops and make sure that we have our voice out there with what's going on to support the initiatives at Spring Lake Park.
Thank you. Kelly, your opportunity.
I'm fine, thank you.
All right. And Michael, you'd have the last chance.
No, thanks.
All right. Well, let's move on to the next question and Marilyn, you'll be first on this question. Do you have policy ideas or other suggestions that you would bring as a school board member to help improve overall test scores in the district and at the same time work to close the achievement gap?
Policy and the achievement gap seem to be somewhat different. Policy is our documents of how the district operates. So, it's like you're asking me two different questions. We have updated our policies, our written policies recently with the help of legal counsel. Our district does not teach to the tests. Some districts do and their test scores reflect that, but we are teaching students what we think is inappropriate and hope that the test scores will raise, but we think that their primary education is much more important than test scores. Those particular tests are not especially helpful because they're given in the spring and we really don't get results until the following fall. So, what testing we do in the district is much more meaningful.
Thank you for your answer. Daphne, the same question to you now. Do you have policy ideas or other suggestions that you would bring to improve overall test scores in the district and to work on closing the achievement gap?
Well, I think that our policies around personalized learning are very strong and I think that's been very attractive to me as a parent, looking at not only, because I don't believe my child is just a test score and that her learning can really be measured by just what she's going to achieve on one test or two tests. I really want to integrate into our policies our teachers, our parents' ideas for how they feel that their children and the teachers as their subject matter experts, how they really feel that our kids learn best and that we're not just taking some rote or scripted way of teaching in the classroom, but that teachers are really the experts. They're the innovators, that they're applying what they know is best to help our kids move forward. And I think that'll eventually be reflected in the standardized test scores as well.
Thank you for your answer. Amy, come to you now with this question. Do you have policy ideas or suggestions that you would bring as a school board member to improve overall test scores and to close the achievement gap?
I am in complete support of the district's initiative for personalized learning. In the discussions that I've had both with parents and with district leadership, I know that it's going to have to, we're going to have to look at how we are getting the best teachers out there. And I draw a parallel to that with my work in the commercial real estate industry. It's ever-changing and we're working with tenants all the time who are trying to design their workspaces, who are designing, who are trying to design their culture about getting the right people in. And I think the district needs to take a harder look at that too to make sure that we're attracting and retaining the best talent out there who have the same educational goals that line up with the district, who are in support of the personalized learning initiative.
Thank you for your answer. Kelly, I'll come over to you now. Do you have policy ideas or just other suggestions that you would bring forth as a school board member to help improve overall test scores and close the achievement gap?
Our policies are governed by state law and we are currently in compliance with the state law as our policies are written and as they are read. Closing the achievement gap is done with our one-on-one learning, our personalized learning initiatives. One-size-does-not-fit-all with our student learning. We're teaching our students not only the basics, but also how to learn and problem-solve. Our staff is wonderful and our staff is champion, is champion in our individual learning goals. And when we do our test scores, we are comparing our children year by year. We are not comparing different cohorts like the state publishes the test scores on.
Thank you for your answer. Michael, I'll come to you now with this question. Do you have policy ideas or other suggestions you would bring forth as a school board member to help improve overall test scores in the district and close the achievement gap?
Well, I think the MCA scores are obviously not the be-all, end-all and everybody here seems to agree on that, but they are important in the sense that number one, the state says they're important. And number two, young parents with children entering the district are very in tune where those test scores are. And that does affect competition when it comes to enrollment, open enrollment, or competition with charter schools. So, they are important, particularly Spring Lake Park does lag behind neighboring districts in science and math. So, I'd like to see an increased emphasis on STEM. I like what the district has started to do in that regard. You know, the personalized learning is also very good in terms of improving the academic scores on the lower end of the spectrum and on the higher end as well. I would like to see maybe STEM initiatives included in extracurricular competition, some public-private partnerships that incorporate STEM into real-world learning environments as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, you'll finish up on this question for us. Do you have policy ideas or other suggestions that you would bring forth as a school board member to help improve overall test scores and close the achievement gap?
So, under the policy side of it, I would work on the boundaries to make sure each school is fair demographically, financially. And then as the personalized learning plan is very important and to make sure we have funding for gifted, the PACE Lab, the 916 Program, and the STEM Program and make sure that the students are connecting with an adult, the DAFF adult, and we're working on their personalized learning plan.
Thank you. Opportunity for rebuttal time. If anyone chooses to use it, Marilyn, you'd have the first opportunity here.
I think we should be recognized as being a full-service school, that we serve gifted children as well as children with special needs and we try to accommodate everyone as they come to us.
Thank you. Daphne?
I think that we need to make sure that we're utilizing all of our resources such as looking at the state with the Minnesota Department of Education. I know there's some pilot projects going on to look at closing the achievement gap and we should be looking at that as a board to see what we can learn to apply to our district.
Amy?
I'm okay.
Kelly?
I'm fine.
Michael?
Oh, thanks.
And Steve?
I'm fine.
All right. I want to thank you for all trying to answer the question that I tried to cram like three things in. Thank you for that. I know it was a little difficult. Let's move on to our next question. Daphne, you'll be first on this question. Are there steps you would like to see the district take in order to improve school safety throughout the school district? Something that's on the minds always of a lot of parents.
Well, certainly, school safety is always important. People want to know that when their kids step through the doors of any Spring Lake Park School, that they feel safe and that they're secure in the time that they're there. I think people, as I've been door-knocking and speaking with voters, I mean, there's been some concern with misconduct, misbehavior, some of the disciplinary procedures and how those things are maybe interfering with learning, maybe not as much a safety issue, but how disruptions in the classroom are really impeding learning. And with that, I think making sure our policies and procedures for discipline, behavioral conduct, those types of things need to be clear. I think establishing equal due process, a fair due process for the children and the parents can really understand that and it's very transparent across the district. And just making sure that we have parental accountability, but as well as we're making sure that we're addressing the underlying problems with the children and that we're not just labeling them as maybe a problem, but that we are addressing the underlying need.
Thank you for your answer. Amy, next, same question to you now. Are there steps that you think or that you would like to see the district take in order to improve school safety throughout the schools?
I know that the district takes a very serious stance on keeping our children safe. And if I would ever find any issues that could be improved upon, I would champion them regarding the safety of children within the classrooms as relating to other children. I think that we really need to make sure that those classrooms are adequately staffed and that so not only the children who are being disrupted are feeling safe, but we're meeting the needs of, excuse me for saying this, but the one provider, or the one, the disruptor. And to try to figure out why this child isn't feeling safe in that classroom and make accommodations for him or her.
Thank you for your answer. Kelly, I'll come over to you now on this question. Are there steps, additional steps you would like to see the district take in order to improve school safety throughout the district at different schools?
We had a levy passed about 12 years ago where we examined the safety of our schools and we created a lot of spaces for the safety of our students. That includes having the doors go into the offices. We have got security cameras. We have got footage. We are monitoring what's going on in our hallways. As far as safety within our classrooms, I agree that a disruptive student can cause chaos within the classroom, but we do need to make sure that all of our students are safe. And if it does come a safety issue, we do need to reach out to the parents or guardian of that student. Our policies are very clear on what is tolerated and what is not tolerated and we do not tolerate any unsafe conditions for our students.
Thank you for your answer. Michael, same question to you. Are there steps that you would like to see the district take in order to improve school safety throughout the district?
Yeah, in door-knocking, other than improving our academics, school discipline has been the number-one concern on the minds of parents. So, I'm very focused. I'd be very focused on that. We need a safe, respectful, and disciplined learning environment or it's a foundational principle. Without that, it's going to be very difficult to achieve the academic successes that we want to achieve as a district. I would support our teachers. I would ask a lot of questions in what they need in terms of resources or even from a policy level so that they can do their job and get a handle on the discipline issues. I don't want them to feel like they're dealing with this with one arm tied behind their back. So, I would increase discipline efforts. I would worry less about liability and more about what's doing, what, doing the right thing. And that's getting our classrooms under control and getting a nice, safe learning environment for our students.
Thank you for your answer. Steve, same question to you. Are there steps you would like to see the district take in order to improve school safety throughout the district?
So, as far as building safety, I think we need a model and encouraging empathy. We need to, but the students know what's going on. They just need to be teamed up with an adult to pass that on. As far as a classroom, we need to make sure that the resources are given to the teachers so they can handle it with a school psychologist, principal, and moving up the ladder. One other area of safety is IT. One other area of safety is IT district-wide and also individual students.
Thank you. Marilyn, you'll finish up this question for us. Are there steps you would like to see the district take in order to improve safety throughout the district?
I would like the buildings to be as safe as they possibly can. And we have addressed that to a large degree. But safety goes beyond that. We are training students on safety on buses. We have cameras on buses. We now have teachers on the playground in addition to paraprofessionals. We, of course, have mandatory reporting of any suspected abuse. We comply with the OSHA rules. And that applies particularly to hazardous materials, which are used in science, but also in our cleaning supplies. And we want to do all of these things and yet make our students feel welcome, valued, and important, and don't want them to feel like they're in a, in a prison. So it's difficult to balance between welcoming and, and keeping some of these things as we would wish.
Thank you for your answer. Opportunity for rebuttal time or extra time now. Daphne, you'd have the first opportunity.
I would only add that I would just want to make sure that, that we do have adequate counseling, mental health services, social worker psychologists in our schools, so that we can make sure that we are properly identifying problems with our kids and getting them the appropriate referrals out to the community that they may need.
Thank you. Amy, you're up next. You're good. Kelly, did you have anything?
I'm fine, thank you.
Michael?
Oh, thanks.
Steve?
I'm fine.
Marilyn?
Among our staff, we also have nurses in each of our school buildings, which help keep children safe and monitor immunizations and well and sick children. So they're very valuable to us as well.
Thank you for your answers. All right, we'll move on to our next question. Amy, I'll have your chance finally to start on a question. With the passage of the bond levy in April of 2016, many construction projects are underway across the district, most notably, obviously, the new school that's being built at the National Sports Center, on the land at the National Sports Center. Some projects have actually even already been completed, the new science addition at the high school. Do you feel from a facility point that the district is set up to handle future growth and to serve the needs of all students moving forward? Amy, you're first on that question.
I do. And as I mentioned before, I, I served on both the facilities planning and facilities design committees to put these, this new school and these new, new learning spaces into effect. And first of all, the one thing that we focused on is what, we set goals for learning. And we set priorities and we set purpose for these schools. And then decided how we are going to fit the school around the learning and not how to fit the learning within the school. We also factored growth into that. We had the projections from the state. We needed to figure out how each of the schools and how we structured them, going from K-3 to K-4 and then reorganizing the middle and intermediate schools. Growth was factored into that for the projections that were received from the state. So I think the district is set up extremely well, not only providing these amazing new learning spaces, but we're going to be able to do that for years to come.
Thank you. Kelly, this question to you now. Do you feel that from a facility standpoint, the district is set up to handle future growth and serve the needs of all students?
Yes, I believe we are in a good position right now for future growth and to service our students. One thing we have done is we have taken the initiative to keep our students in our home schools rather than sending them out for special services. We will have to make sure that those spaces continue to be safe and monitored, both electronically and also with our staff. We have listened to the demographers from the state. And we have also hired an independent demographer who was pretty much right on. When she said we would have 52 new students, we had 51 new students. So that was money well-spent to take a look at our growth. We'll continue to watch the Wood, the Westwood Complex where our students all come together. And I was, I was a champion of the second entrance for the buses for safety features on, for that main reason, of course, for the safety of our students and the parents who are dropping their children off at school.
Thank you. Michael, I'll come to you now with this question. Do you feel that from a facility standpoint, the district is set up to handle the future growth and serve the needs of all students?
I think from a facility standpoint, the district is in good shape right now. Of course, we would need to continue to look at growth models. And those are valuable tools. But with the changing landscape of education, the models may not be as predictable in the future as they currently are. So given those uncertainties, my general attitude on that would be, I'd be very cautious about further expansion at this point. I think the district is set up well where it's at. But if we did have to decide to expand, I would view it with a long lens to maximize efficiencies and not do it in a piecemeal fashion. But I think we are set up well at this point.
Thank you. Steve, same question to you. Do you feel that from a facility standpoint, the district is set up for future growth and to serve the needs of all students?
So the way we'll know if the future growth is, is being satisfied is going to take about 20 years to make sure that, you know, there's many districts that are shutting schools down. We need to look at expanding schools. Operating costs never stop. But there are many new, new homes going into the Spring Lake Park over on 109th and Lexington. We need to really commit to a manageable class size. But as far as looking at the middle school, we need to look at expansion before making a new, new school.
Thank you for your answer. Marilyn, do you feel that the, from a facility standpoint, the district is set up now for future growth and to serve the needs of all students?
My simple answer is yes. We are projected to grow perhaps another thousand students. That would be probably seven or eight students per grade. So when you look at 1,000, it sounds like a big number, but those would be spread over 13 grades and not all of one. We have looked very carefully at the space that's currently available and have converted rooms that had little use into spaces that will be used much more fully. So I believe that we are in good shape for, for our space. The one thing that's going to happen is our graduating classes have become so big that we're probably going to have to look at an off-site space for those happy experiences.
Thank you very much for your answer. Daphne, you'll finish up on this question. Do you feel that from a facility standpoint, the district is set up to handle future growth and serve the needs of all students?
Yes, I do. It's my understanding that all the facilities in the district have been updated within the past 10 years. So I think from just a physical plant standpoint, we're in good shape. We're certainly addressing the district growth and particularly the, the population growth that's in blame now with the new construction of the new elementary school that's being built. I'm really excited by the creative, innovative learning spaces, the new STEM facilities, and really how they're personalizing the spaces so that our students can learn better and personalize it to the subjects that they're going to learn and creating spaces that are unique. And, and I think we, the district as a whole's been very forward-thinking and looking at some models that are very progressive. And, and I think it's going to be really great for our students.
Thank you. Opportunity for extra time. Amy, you'd be first. Kelly?
I would like to add that there is education going on that is happening with students that are not physically in our buildings, but electronically. And we do have classes that we offer electronically. And we will continue to use the iPads to enhance our learning experience.
Thank you. Michael? Steve?
I'm fine.
Marilyn?
Fine.
I'm fine.
All right. Ready for the last question that I have for you this evening? So let's see, Kelly, we'll be coming back around to you to start with this question. How will you work to serve all residents in the district? Not just those with children and not just the ones who vote for you?
That's a very good question. As a parent, my four children are all alumni of Spring Lake Park Schools. And I have two grandchildren that are in district residence. I will continue to serve all of our residents, not just the parents. One way we have done that is we did not levy the full tax amount, so we are able to hold, hold true our lower taxes for our residents. I continue to listen, to look, and to speak to our residents outside of normal parents. And I believe that I can make the best decision for the best amount of students and for our community.
Thank you. Michael, same question to you. How do you work to serve all residents of the district? Not just those with children and not just those who vote for you?
I think transparency and accountability is a big factor in that. We need to build a sense of community and that starts with being as transparent as possible. But beyond that, even if a resident does not have a child attending Spring Lake Park Schools, I've found that they still are very focused on improving our academics within the district. So that would be my top priority. And I think that would serve everybody's interest in the district. We have a changing landscape right now with education, with increased competition from open enrollment and charter schools. And we need to get better. We need to be more responsive to the community. You know, I, this issue is very close to me. I know families that have recently made decisions or will be making decisions on where to send their school, kids to school. And I've coached kids that attend charter schools. This isn't theoretical for me. It's very important. And we need to do everything we can to make sure we're improving our academics and being as responsive as we can to the community.
Thank you. Steve, this question to you. How will you work to serve all residents in the district? Not just those with children and not just those who vote for you?
So I'll be financially, fiscally responsible. I certainly don't know who votes for me. And, and I will look out for, for the best interests of children, but also the taxpayer. We certainly don't want children to leave to go to open enrollment. Charter schools are becoming bigger and bigger. There's more competition. We need to, we need to stay on the cutting edge with the STEM lab, gifted, and also do the other side, the PAYS, the 916. But as far as how will I handle the people that, that voted for me and didn't vote for me is to be fiscally responsible.
Thank you. Marilyn, this question to you. How will you work to serve all residents in the district? Not just those with children and not just those who vote for you?
There's an old saying, "It pays to advertise." And I think one of our faults is that we have not advertised sufficiently the services that are available to the schools. I think that we would welcome people who have children and those who don't. And that we need to extend that welcoming hand more and give them more opportunities to be involved in the school district. We have a Panther Foundation. It's not really of the school district, but yet goes hand-in-hand. That's a group that works in the community and has donated over a million dollars to the schools for which we are most grateful. The Lions use our facilities to have their breakfasts. And that brings in a lot of people from the community. So however we can do a community outreach would be to our benefit.
Thank you for your answer. Daphne, this question to you now. How will you work to serve all residents in the district? Not just those with children and not just those who vote for you?
Well, I agree with Marilyn that we certainly have services in the district that are from birth to adulthood. I've taken advantage of some of the community education courses, as well as my daughter has even been able to be in some of the early childhood classes. And so I, I think we do need to project to the community that we are here for the community. And it's my position that, you know, a well-educated child really benefits the entire community. But overall, I think we do definitely need to listen to residents and, and get their perspectives and, and their concerns. And make sure that we're getting face time in the community and that we're not just sitting behind, you know, a table, attending a couple of meetings a month and, and not really being active in what's happening in the lives of our community members and addressing those concerns proactively rather than reactively.
Thank you. Come over to you now, Amy, with this question. How would you work to serve all residents in the district? Not just those who have children and not just those who vote for you?
I have been able to meet a variety of voters through Kids First, through the past three, I believe, levy or bond campaigns that I've worked with Kids First on. And it's not just parents who are supporting them. It's, it's the community members as well. I also know that we have a renewal coming up in 18 or 19. And I think that the district needs to take a hard look at how we're going to prove to our taxpayers who are supporting our efforts that we are spending their money wisely. Again, in, in my involvement with the district, I've always been very impressed with how they are spending their money. To sit with Amy Schultz and to listen to her throw all the numbers and then kind of put them out in layman's terms, the district is doing a very good job. And just to let all voters know that, yes, we, we do take this seriously. We are spending your money wisely and look at the results that we're getting.
Thank you. Opportunity for rebuttal time. Start back over here with Kelly.
Oh, thank you.
Michael?
Yeah, I would just like to add that, you know, my goal would be to improve the academic standing of our district so that families in our district have an easy choice, and that's to send their kids to Spring Lake Park Schools. And if we have the right vision combined with the resources at our disposal, I know that we can compete favorably with anyone.
Thank you. Steve?
No, I'm fine.
Marilyn?
One thing that we've not mentioned is our website, which has a lot of information on it. You could spend a whole day roaming through it to find information. And one of the interesting pieces on it right now is that Spring Lake Park Senior High School is in the top 5% of high schools in the state. We're very proud of that and we should be shouting it loudly.
Daphne?
I would just add that we need to be aware of what is attracting families and keeping families in the district because we certainly are having more competitiveness with charter and private schools. And we need to make sure that we can remain competitive and have those services to attract people to Spring Lake Park.
And Amy?
I know there's been a lot of talk about charter schools and, and kids leaving the district. But I think it's worth noting that we have more kids coming into the district now than are leaving. And so we're still at a net gain, both for our students and, and a financial standpoint.
Thank you. And thank you all for answering all the different questions that I posed to you tonight. I appreciate you, your thoughtful answers, and I'm sure the viewers and voters do as well. We're going to move now to our closing statements to finish up our debate this evening. Kelly, you are up first with your closing statement.
Thank you. Thank you for viewing this program. I truly care about the future of education and the future of our school district. I will continue to look for ways to save the taxpayers' money and remain physically, fiscally responsible. I'll continue to spend our dollars in a wise and effective and efficient manner. I will continue to look for sources of funding other than going to our taxpayers. I will continue to advocate for public education outside of our district through my involvement with the Minnesota School Boards Association. So keep experience, keep commitment, and keep dedication working for you. Vote for me on November 7.
Thank you for your closing statement. Michael, you are up next with your closing statement.
Spring Lake Park Schools are filled with great people doing a lot of great things. And there are a lot of exciting opportunities on the horizon. There are also some upcoming challenges that we need to be aware of and to confront. I believe in Spring Lake Park Schools. My children attend Spring Lake Park Schools. I like the sense of community that they bring about. I have a personal investment, make sure our schools continue to strive for improvement. My philosophy on a school board is to have seven different people with diverse backgrounds and experiences coming together, collaborating, and making the best decisions possible for our students. I believe I have the experience, the temperament, the commitment, the personal investment, and the common sense to be an asset to the school board. If elected, I promise to be an active and engaged school board member and to do my best to make sure that we deliver a world-class education for our children. So I ask that you vote for Michael Kruen on November 7.
Thank you. Steve, you're up next with, with your closing statement.
So closing, I'd like to thank the North Metro for hosting the debate. I, I hope that this allows people to get to know me, my values, beliefs, a bit more. Turn it over here. The board has done, I'd like to, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your closing statement. Marilyn, you're up next with your closing statement.
All of my campaign materials say leadership, experience, commitment. I think to be on a board for this long that I have shown some leadership. The district has grown not only physically, but in opportunities for students academically, athletically, and many other ways. And the board has become a better board than it was at one time. And we are now recognized in the state as being an outstanding board. I certainly have experience. I've been here, well, in the 30s of years. It has been a wonderful opportunity for me because I have learned so much. I certainly have the commitment. During that time, I believe I have only missed three board meetings. So have been there. My commitment tonight and of the other discussion was because I have a son who's had surgery and I still have come to this and gone to all the meetings. And so, vote Forsberg.
Thank you. Move on now to Daphne, your closing statement.
Well, I appreciate this opportunity to speak with the voters. You know, public You know, public schools gave me an exceptional education so that I could have choices about my future, and I believe that not only my daughter, but all children in the school district can have an exceptional education through our public schools. I would know that with the right resources and support, that academic success is possible for all of our kids. I want to be fiscally responsible to the taxpayer while still providing exceptional services to our district. I also want to make sure that we have safe and healthy schools. I believe that once voters compare the candidates, they'll see that I can offer a new perspective and that as well I have a background that would be an asset to the district. I would be honored to serve the children and families of the Spring Lake Park Schools, and I ask that you vote for me, Daphne Pons, on November 7. Thank you.
Thank you for your closing statement. And Amy, it's now your opportunity for your closing statement.
Thank you. I'm asking voters to vote Amy Whitten for school board in November because I am extremely passionate about and dedicated to this school district. I hope the voters will see that the work I've done the past 10 years and the efforts I put forward to advocate for our students. My leadership capabilities both within the district and in my professional career will be an asset to the board. Many of the duties asked of a school board member mirror what I encounter on a day-to-day basis at Transwestern. Finally, I don't believe the status quo is good enough. We have an administration at Spring Lake Park that supports new initiatives. I want to serve the district in a larger role to expand the learning experiences for our students. I think a strong district is one where the board, administration, teachers, staff, and especially parents partner together to build successful learners. Thank you, and please vote Amy Whitten for school board November 7.
Thank you, and again, thank you all. I appreciate you taking the time tonight to come in here, speak to the viewers, and to share some of your thoughts and ideas for the Spring Lake Park School District. So, thank you again for taking the time on your schedules to do that. I appreciate it. I want to remind you that you can always head to northmetrotv.com for complete Local Decision 2017 coverage. On there, you'll find candidate biographies from these candidates and others running for local office this fall. If you miss a portion of this debate, you can watch it all right there on northmetrotv.com as well as see other debates and interviews with candidates across the North Metro that are all running for office this fall. I've been your moderator, Ben Hale, and I want to thank you for watching.